Participation can occur through written comments about agenda items submitted to staff prior to the meeting, which are always welcome and helpful. We do have some written comments from the public on item two today. Thank you to those commenters. During our meeting, there are also opportunities for members of the public to participate during the verbal communications period. An individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And during the hearing on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item which is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communication period, or during the consideration of an agenda item, you must join the Zoom webinar via the link and password provided on page two of the staff report. When I announce the item for which you wish to speak, click the raise hand feature in Zoom. And if you are participating by phone only, press star nine on your telephone keypad. When called to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Alternatively, you may choose to speak anonymously. It is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. We have now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda. Mr. Paulson, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
Thank you, Chair. I don't currently see any hands. If anyone would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature now. I do not see any hands raised, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Then we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. We have one consent item to be acted upon with a single motion, and that's the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on January 13, 2021. Any member of the commission or the public may choose to pull an item from the consent calendar for additional discussion later in the meeting. Does any commission member or member of the public wish to pull the item from the consent calendar?
Chair, I don't see any members of the public with their hand raised, but I do see-
Commissioner Hansen?
Chair, I just wanted to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, which are the minutes of January 13, but I did not want to pull it.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
The motion?
Commissioner Tavanna has his hand raised. Thank you. Any more comments on the minutes? In that case, I'll call a roll, call a vote. Commissioner Hansen? Hi. Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Suzuki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burge? I wasn't sure if you were gonna call us. I'm sorry, because I'm right there at that meeting.
Okay. Vice Chair Burge?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I'm the one that's sitting here laughing because Joel and I keep going back and forth on trying to switch me to be able to speak, so.
Glad to have you for this. And I vote yes, so the motion passes 7-0, no abstentions. We'll now move on to the public hearing, item number two. This item is requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence, construction of a new single-family residence, removal of a large protected tree, and site improvements requiring a grading permit on property zone R1-12, APN 510-20-068. This property is located at 62 Ellenwood Avenue. Property owner Lisa and Case Swenson. And the applicant is Lisa Nichols from Arcanum Architecture. Project planner is Sean Mullin. And as should be noted, this item is continued from our December 9, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. First, may I see a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? All right, thank you. Are there any disclosures? Great. I understand, Mr. Mullin, you'll be giving the staff report for this item.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. As mentioned on October, sorry, December 9, 2020, the Planning Commission considered the application and continued the matter with direction, the applicant, to consider the comments of the Planning Commission, including incorporating softer materials, utilizing materials that are age-compatible within the architecture and the surrounding neighborhood, articulate the two-story mass by stepping it in the front elevation, reduce the driveway width, and revise the fence design to be more compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant now presents revised development plans in response to these comments. The architecture of the residence has been revised to a cottage vernacular incorporating wood and stone siding, a wood shingle roof, divided light windows, wood garage doors, and wood lintels, trellis, and columns. The revised materials as presented in your plans might include architectural copper, and as detailed in your staff report, the residential design guidelines discourages the use of architectural copper, and the applicant has responded to this by changing to a painted, bondedized metal. This is not reflected in your plans, but was received just before the publishing of the report. This change is included as a condition of approval in Exhibit 15. The footprint, siding, and massing of the residence remains consistent to the previous proposal, with two exceptions: a height reduction of the single-story portion on the north side of the residence, and a change from a hip roof to a gable-end roof on the center two-story portion of the residence. In addition to the changes to the residence, the applicant has also reduced the driveway width by four feet, and revised the design and siding of the front fence and driveway gate in response to the direction provided by the Planning Commission. An addendum has been distributed, including additional public comments received after the publishing of the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the revised application, and if determined to meet the direction provided on December 9, approve the architecture inside application by taking the actions outlined on pages three and four of your staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullin. Questions? Vice Chair Burge?
More for clarification from staff. As this is a continuation based on recommendations from the Planning Commission, does the town architect do a second review of the drawings provided?
Typically, no, and in this case, no. When there's a major change in massing and design, it's at staff's discretion to send it back to the architect. In this case, the massing remains consistent, and it was really a more of a materials change to change the architectural style of the massing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, just as a reminder, and for the benefit of our new, oh, sorry, Commissioner Hansen.
Yes, I have two questions, if it's okay with the Chair. The first one is, I did note that staff had put in a condition about the copper. However, I also wanted to ask about the wood shake roof. Given our big concerns in the town about wildfires, do we have any similar concern for wood shake roofs? And I say that only because I also, a long time ago, we lived in Texas, and it was a big issue there as well.
Thank you. The shake roof, I collaborated with the building official and checked it to see if a shake, a wood shake roof could be constructed and assembled in a way that would meet the requirements of the town. And there's several different ways to do it, but he assured me that it can be. Those details would be worked out in the building permit process to determine how the layup is built.
Okay, all right, that's good to hear. And may I ask another question, Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, so my other question is about the fence ordinance that we have. So the applicant is asking for a exception in height for the fence. And then at our last meeting, we'd also discussed about the style of it as well. So my question is, we went, one of the speakers went through this, but I wanted to make sure we are clear on, as a commission and the public as well, is what are the conditions under which the Planning Commission is able to make findings to give, grant a variance or a height exception on fences?
In this case, the applicant is asking for the fence height exception based on a security concern. And they've outlined that on the landscape page referenced in the staff report. There are several different findings that can be made, including a wildlife problem, special circumstance with safety. I don't have the language right in front of me, but the one that they're pursuing tonight has to do with safety.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we knew what all the options were. And I did see in the staff report that they had noted their concern for the variance, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page about what, under what conditions we can grant a variance.
Okay, thank you. Town Attorney, Mr. Schultz?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. If we could get a statement made by our new commissioners, Thomas and Suzuki, that they have reviewed the previous videos of this, so they're capable of knowing the entire record, that would be appreciated.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Suzuki?
I've watched the video.
Thank you. And you're both fully prepared to discuss and make decisions on this matter? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Town Attorney. All right, any other questions? Just as a reminder, the commission is being asked tonight to decide on the following. There are four items: the demolition of a single-family residence, removal of the protected trees, the fence exception, as Commissioner Hanson has spoken about, and the compliance with the residential design guidelines. So we will now open the public hearing and give the applicant up to five minutes to address the commission. Mr. Paulson, who will be speaking for the applicant?
My name is Tim Chappell. I'm the architect of Arcanum Architecture.
Welcome, and go ahead.
Okay. At the last meeting on December 9- I can't echo. Are you guys doing echo?
We can hear you fine.
The last meeting on December 9, the discussion about three items that you guys were specifically looking as to be evaluated. Number one was, we talked about, was the age of compatibility of the neighborhood. Two was the narrowing the driveway width. And third was the fence height. So with that, the big thing we looked at was the age compatibility was the first thing that we want to look at. Sean, could you bring up the presentation? I just have something to toggle through to make sense. So originally, this was the presentation we made last time when we had our hearing on December 9. It was a discussion about the house looking too modern compared to the neighborhood. And at the meeting, the commissioner even suggested that we talked about doing something like a Spanish colonial, something that'd be appropriate to the original period of this time period in this neighborhood.
Excuse me, Mr. Chappell, could you speak more into the microphone? You're going in and out.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Getting echo feedback on my computer. So when we did this new design, we decided not to do the Spanish colonial language because the owners didn't want to do the tile roof. So if you look at the next slide, we did a bunch of different alterations to change the architectural vernacular. So what we're looking at doing was trying to do something, we figured, a Northern California cottage, that would be more charming. So we replaced the hip roofs with gable roof forms. We changed the wood siding from vertical wood siding to horizontal painted siding. We eliminated all of the metal roofing. We added more screening in the courtyard. We eliminated the entry trellis. We lowered the building height to the right. We replaced the glass entry doors with traditional wood doors. And we eliminated all the cement plaster. And so if you go to the next slide, the materials changed to be softer and all-natural. So we did look at, we're looking at using wood shingles on the roof, and they would be treated for a Class A rating. As we talked about, we would not be doing copper for the metal. Instead, we'd be doing a painted bondedized, would be a dark metal. We eliminated all the plaster and replaced it with a painted, kind of like a French gray wood siding. We then added some wood for the eaves, that would be a stained grade, dark metal windows and doors, and a stone material. And this is generally kind of show the palette kind of textual that we're looking at. We want to make it feel very soft and natural. If you look at the next slide, Sean, the house itself has changed in somewhat dramatically and making it feel much more, more of a traditional home. So with all these elements coming together, you can see we, everything is tactile with shadows. The trims around the windows have been beefed up and kind of oversized to be a little more clunky. So we've added some shutters and screens. You can see the entrance now with the front door, and it almost feels like almost an enclosed porch, the entry hallway. So all these things that make it feel more tactile and a little bit more charming. And I think that really helps kind of make the, help the language work well with the community, without trying to be too literal, being a bungalow or cod, literally a craftsman, craftsmen's style, instead of it being more of just nondescript kind of cottage. Then we also did things like the driveway. We had to be, talked to the fire department. They allowed us to reduce the driveway from 18 feet to 14 feet. And then at the very front of the property, you the next slide, please. This was the original design with the fencing. It had some stone elements to it. Look at the next slide. It was reduced, the stone was reduced, the wood became more rustic. Look at the next slide. Again, this was the original entry gates. One more slide, Sean. It was definitely more rustic. Everything was kind of changed to be a little more neighborhood-friendly and a little more, more tactile, more rural on the materials. So John Merton from Studio Green, he's the landscape architect, he is here to answer questions specifically on this. He's, I assume, raising his hand if you want to, Sean, do you want to let him in and say something?
I may be in, I'm not sure. Do you hear me?
Yes, you are. Go ahead, John.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I'm John Merton, the Studio Green landscape architect. And excited to be working on this project. Beautiful. The, we heard the comments about the fence, the front fence. And all along, we've wanted this front fence to feel very much embedded in the front slope landscape. But we've introduced layers in the planting with the kind of orchard on the slope instead of an open lawn that's there today. We've also moved the fence back from its current location. And the current fence is about five feet tall and metal. And here, in response to the comments about making it more historically appropriate and more natural, we definitely have softened up the materials. We've omitted the steel frames and the vertical handles and a lot of those expressive elements that are more contemporary and modern.
Vice Chair Burge?
Yes.
That is the combined five minutes, Chair. If you have questions or commissioners have questions specific to that, you can have him answer those.
Does anyone on the commission have questions for the applicant? And I'm not able to see the entire screen, so I can't tell. If anyone has their hands raised. Yes, Commissioner Barnett?
I have a question, just to nail this issue down, that the color of the paint at the second level horizontal wood siding will be the lighter shade, which was a change from the earlier rendition.
Yes.
Okay.
It is the kind of French white color on the material board.
Yeah, very good. I have another question, if I may proceed.
Please do.
Can you give me the heights of the first and second floors from the floor to ceiling? One of the members of the public raised an issue about possibly lowering the height of the building by lowering the first floor ceiling height.
The first floor ceiling is under 10 feet. It's nine something. It would be 10 on exact framing, but it's, it's going to be a little under 10 feet.
Okay, I think it was originally 11 foot six, so that's an improvement.
Well, that's the floor-to-floor.
Oh, I see. Okay. And then a related question is, are the first and second floors the same height?
What do you mean the same height? The floor-ceiling height?
As seen from the exterior.
Yes, it's all the same. I mean, it's an eight, I think it's an eight-foot plate height, eight-six on the second floor, and, but it's always the same, the same height.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the fence. Could you clarify the, I think I heard something about this, but make sure I heard it correctly, the existing fence height, and then what the proposed fence height is? And then I have a follow-up question.
Is this directed to the landscape architect?
Whoever can answer the question is fine.
John should be able to answer.
Yeah. So the fence that's being proposed is, it varies because of the sloping condition from three and a half, around three and a half to four and a half feet. And the, the existing fence averages around five feet.
I'm talking about mostly in the front, because I do understand that our fence ordinance has different rules for the front versus other parts of the yard. So the, the front you're saying is three and a half to four feet now with the proposal, and then it was five feet before?
Oh, I see. No, that we've asked for the exception all along, and the changes to this fence design are primarily the material and patterning and design. The, we also had these kind of stone fins, and there were some higher points on them as a result because of the slope, but they're gone. Now the current fence design conforms to the sloping condition of the site. It sort of varies between three and a half to four and a half feet in height.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, well, that was just the, the main, you know, the main, the, we're asking, we're asking for the exception, which according to the code is the community development director is the one that issues the exception. And there are numerous ways in which you can ask for it. And it just has to be one of those criteria. We've defined the three that we think applies, and the primary one is the security needs of the client and their feelings of what the space is. Which, the three foot, which is the required fence height would not be an appropriate or accessible to the client, just because it doesn't feel like it would provide the kind of barriers that just emotionally would be adequate for them. And as well as keeping the pet in, or the other was just the, just the fact that the property itself is a pie shape, and you have a very long street frontage and a very narrow back. So it adds to that kind of perception of more fence in the front of this particular property.
Okay, I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas? You're on mute.
Thank you. Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Um, my, I had a follow-up question about the fence, and it has to do with the security, the request for the variance due to security reasons. And is that because of the grade of the property and the actual house itself is in that middle section, which is on, as Mr. Chappell mentioned, like, in the past meetings, that that is on the hill, at the top of the height of the property, how it goes up and then down? Is that the security reason that the fence, if it, the current fence does not provide enough to the actual house because it's set far, so far back? If that could just be clarified, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. I think the existing fence that's on the property is a metal fence, it's about five feet in height, that's closer to the street. As we move the fence back, the owner is feeling that being more vulnerable as a result of being completely open. And so if we met the current fence requirement, that's three feet. And literally, anyone could just step over three feet. And so for his feeling of comfort and safety, having more of a barrier is important psychologically. But it's still not a tall fence. It's a very low fence. And it's not actually a variance, it's an exception. So I'm not sure that the findings, the same, the same kind of findings have to be met. However, I do believe that, that the criteria is met here.
Great, thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, now we'll move to public comments. Members of the public may choose, you may choose to state your name and your address, or to speak anonymously. But please understand that this meeting is being recorded for the public. Do any members of the public wish to speak on this matter? Mr. Paulson?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Beck has her hand raised, or Mr. Beck has his hand raised?
Yes, this is Mark Beck and my wife Barbara Beck. We're the owners of the home at 60 Ellenwood, just north of the Swensons. We've been in town for 25 years. We've seen this neighborhood take on a transformation with a number of new and beautiful homes in this neighborhood. We've also built two other custom homes in the town in the last 25 years and commercialized a property in the Santa Cruz Mountains. So we're highly skilled in the art of building. We liked their original design that was proposed last year. I think the changes, actually, we've looked at all the drawings, are actually spectacular. I think it's even better than it was before, and we're 100% in favor of this, of this project, and would like to ask you to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I am not seeing any hands raised currently. And now we have Mr. Comente.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, Vice Chair Burge, did you wish to ask a question of Mr. Beck?
I did. I did.
Thank you. If Mr. Beck, please join us, rejoin us, one of our commissioners has a question for you.
I think I'm here.
Great. Thank you. I just, since you've lived in the neighborhood for a long time, and you, you are very familiar with how the neighborhood has changed, the family is asking for an exception for the front fence. And I just wanted to know if you felt that the increased height on that front fence, you feel, feels appropriate within the neighborhood, or if perhaps you feel like it causes any type of inconsistency?
No, I, we're totally in support of that. We have about a four-foot wall in front of our home, big lawn in front. This is where our kids played when they were young. We hear their kids playing in the front- We hear their kids playing in the front yard.
Right.
And this is a heavily traveled street with walkers and bikers and fast cars. So, you know, boy, we'd want the same thing. We wouldn't want anybody to be able to jump over the wall, do anything, grab a kid, whatever, you know? Generally a safe neighborhood, but we're in favor of that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Vice Chair Birch. And do any other commissioners have questions for for Mr. Beck? Seeing none, Mr. Paulson, other other members of the public wishing to speak?
So we did have Robert Comente have his hand raised, and he has now re-raised that his hand, so I'm going to allow him to speak. You'll have up to three minutes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, this is Kate Comente. We live straight across the street from the project. Before, we we had a meeting with the Swensons, and Case told us that he would in some way mitigate the problem that there will be with the construction, the parking, and all the vehicles that are going to be involved in this project. Is there any way that we can have some reassurance that there won't be vehicles parked in front of our house?
Is that the conclusion of your comments, Mr. Mert?
That's it. That's it. How will he mitigate the problem of the construction traffic?
We're not permitted to engage in a conversation with you unless there are specific questions from the other commissioners on this topic.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Seeing none. Mr. Paulson, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Have you not seen any more hands raised? If you wish to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature. I'm not seeing any hands raised, Chair, and Mr. Mullins might be able to comment as far as potential construction impacts. There is, I believe, a condition for a construction management plan, as well as something that handles construction vehicle parking.
Thank you.
That's correct. Yeah, thank you, Chair. That's correct. There is several conditions by the Parks and Public Works Department that have to deal with construction management. They'll have to review a construction management plan prior to permit issuance, and they'll look at parking at that time. And if there are parking issues that do arise, the town code compliance officer can be notified from the, from the public, and they'll come out and have a discussion with the the general contractor to ensure that they stay on the property.
A follow-up question for you, Mr. Mullins. Do those conditions of construction requirements, do they provide for no parking in front of the neighboring properties?
I can try to pull them up on the fly. I don't believe they do. I believe it's limited to not blocking the right-of-way and making sure that the deliveries and everything don't impede traffic. So I think that's the limitation there. If there were further limitations that the commission wanted to entertain, they could provide direction to staff to modify conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mullins? I will close the public hearing at this point, and
Chair Janoff?
Yes.
Just quickly, the applicant actually has an opportunity to respond for up to three minutes.
Yeah, just getting to that. So the applicant is invited back to speak. You will have three minutes to address any concerns that you might have heard or any other comments you'd like to make.
And Chair, it looks like late, Ms. Cantona also raised her hand, so if you want to allow her to speak for three minutes?
Ah, yes, go ahead, Ms. Cantona.
And I'll have to change her to panelist because apparently she has not updated her Zoom as we've requested multiple times. So let me change her to panelist really quick.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My question has to do with the fencing. I've been trying to pull up the plans, but my computer is very slow. Is the fencing setback from, you can't answer questions, okay. My concern is that the fence ordinance was just recently passed, and the provision that of the three-foot high fence in the front of a site is a new requirement. And I guess I have concerns about why the fence can't either be moved further back so that it's still in compliance with the fence ordinance. And if this is a security problem, then that's a security problem for every single home that exists or is built in Los Gatos in the future. And giving an exception now would essentially void that provision of the fence ordinance that was just recently passed. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Cantona. Any questions from commissioners to Ms. Cantona's point? Seeing none, Mr. Paulson, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
Currently, I see Mr. or Ms. Beck again raising their hand, so I'm not sure if the other one wishes to speak. I'm going to allow them to speak for and answer that question.
Sorry to interrupt again. I'd like to make a quick comment on the fence and the fence line. I understand that the Swensons have agreed to pull their fence back, but if you look at the street line, our fence, the fence south of them, Wallace's fence, all those fences are in a, in a nice line, and most of them are higher than what the Swensons are asking to do. Having them pull their fence even further back onto their property is going to make our street line look a little funny. So we would ask that, you know, approve what they've offered and you've agreed to or they want to agree to, and don't try to pull it back any further. That will make our street line look funny, we think.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. My apologies to the commissioner and the public. Generally speaking, we allow members of the public to speak once and only once. It was unclear whether the the Beck's were Mr. Beck or Mrs. Beck, so my apologies for that. Any other members of the public who haven't already spoken?
I do not see any hands raised, Chair, so I think we're ready to go back to the applicant. I'm going to allow Mr. Chappelle to speak. I'm not sure if Mr. Merton will want to speak as well.
Go ahead.
This is Tim Chappelle. Hi. I was just going to say that because of the pie shape of the property, we do believe that we'll be able to heavily park the front. It has, one positive of this, this shape is that we have a lot of street frontage, which would allow us to be more aggressive potentially to park the cars even perpendicular for the construction vehicles. We understand that the neighborhood is concerned by that, and the owners have expressed their sensitivity to that. That was it.
Okay, no further comments then. Any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Ms., Commissioner Suzuki?
Thank you. This doesn't exactly have to do with what was previously said today, but there are a lot of comments regarding the removal of the two trees. I was wondering if you could reiterate the purpose of the removal. And as a follow-up question to that, is there anything in your plans to placate the community in this respect, such as replacement vegetation, replacement trees, so on and so forth? Thank you.
So we went through a long process with this, with the community. And originally, we were trying to save the the main tree, one major tree that we're removing, the oak tree on top of the hill. Originally, we looked at putting the building below that between the hilltop and the street. And as we were developing the design, we were presenting through the demolition process with the historical, they asked us to show us where we planned to put the new house. And at that point, we showed it in the front yard. And one of the board members who was a neighbor had said that was really, had a big impact on the neighborhood, and they didn't like that. And when we talked to the planning department after that, they said that they would possibly consider the removal of one of the trees to allow the house to be positioned deeper into the property, so it would have a less impact on the fabric and the, the neighborhood, the blocking of the massing. So that was why we started doing, that wasn't the original concept. And we are planting a lot of trees on the property, and John Merton can talk about the number of trees that we are to balance the removal. But it was part of the design process of why that one tree is being removed. And the shape of the house, the way it's designed, is to minimize the impact on all of the other trees on the property and the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle. Any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
And Chair, Mr. Merton is is able to speak as well. He is landscape architect. He might be able to provide some additional information for Mr. Suzuki.
Yeah, thank you. So I didn't exactly count the number, but I think that, I recall that we have about 12 new trees going into this property. So the largest amount of those trees are sitting in the front yard. The current front of this property is a lawn that runs all the way up to the front of the house. We're making that essentially in portrait. And we're also adding trees on the west side of the house with the adjoining neighbor. We're adding four new large screening trees. So I'd say that I would characterize that this property will become much more tree-canopied and much more forested than it currently is. And that's part of the intention. It also would create more separation from the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merton. Any further questions for the applicant?
And I'm Chair, if I may be heard?
Yes, Commissioner Barnett.
I was remiss in not addressing to staff a couple of questions that I had. I wonder if I could go back to that?
If your questions are not for the applicant, then we'll close the public session and move on to questions for staff or discussions among the commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one with their hand raised, now we'll close the public portion of the hearing and ask if any of the commissioners have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or introduce a motion for consideration. Mr. Barnett, would you wish to speak now?
Yes, please. I wonder if staff could confirm whether the property is a historic residence or located in a historic district?
The property is not located in a historic district. The home was, the original, or the home that's there now, was built prior to 1941. The Historic Preservation Committee has reviewed a request to remove that, this home from the inventory, which was approved. So it's no longer considered a historic resource.
I see. Then if I might have had a second question for Mr. Schultz?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Schultz, we had a brief exchange of emails this morning, but I'd like you to confirm on the record your opinion as to the question I raised this morning. And that is, do you agree that there is an ambiguity in ordinance section 2910-0992E regarding the required findings for the removal of a large protected tree? And namely, is it sufficient for the planning commission to find that a large protected tree can be removed based only on a finding that the tree restricts the economic development of the property? Or instead, must a finding also include that the tree severely limits the use of the property in a manner not typically experienced by owners of similarly situated properties?
Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. Yes, I agree with that interpretation. So, you know, this code section was implemented in 2018 by an outside consultant and some input from the public. And so, you know, it has not been interpreted by this board, that section. So certainly, because of where the "and" is and the two phrases, I certainly could make an argument either way. So that does create the ambiguity because this is quasi-judicial. You know, I could give you my opinion, but I think it's really for this board's decision to discuss and determine that clause. And then we probably should in the future clear up the intent of that section to make certain this clears for future decisions that are made by this board.
Thank you very much for the comment.
Vice Chair Birch?
Actually, this is going to be kind of a request, Chair, if it's all right, for the sake of those of us that weren't perhaps in that conversation, Mr. Barnett. If you would, please reiterate for us in that section again, what you read, how you're questioning, how it's interpreted, and how it would, it impacts the discussion today.
Commissioner Barnett, you're on mute.
Christian Barnett, you're still on mute. Nope, you're still on, still on mute. So I'll, I'll jump in a little bit, and then hopefully Mr. Barnett can jump in as well. So if you look at the required findings, I believe it was attachment two or three, Mr. Mullins, of the original report from December of last year, there is a finding called out, which is number four of a specific section of the town code. And that language has, is what Commissioner Barnett read, and there is an "or" statement. And so hopefully, Mr. Mullins can pull that up, and maybe he can read that if we can't get Mr. Barnett's mic to work, and he can read through that. There is an "or" statement, and the question is, does this latter part of the section after the "or" apply to both the piece before the "or" and the piece after the "or"? So, Mr. Mullins, can you repeat that language again?
Sure. So this is section 2910-0992, item four. The retention of the tree restricts the economic enjoyment of the property or creates an unusual hardship for the property owner by severely limiting the use of the property in a manner not typically experienced by owners of similarly situated properties. And the applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the director or the deciding body that there are no reasonable alternatives to preserve the tree.
And I would also just offer, and I'm not sure if Ms. Zarnitz or Mr. Mullins remember, but it was stated by the applicant in their presentation that, you know, the house originally was pulled forward, and Historic Preservation Committee wanted them to push it back. And I believe that was a direct impact to that tree. And so it also, that was part of their reasoning for moving the home back, which did in fact impact this tree.
Yes, that's correct. When this, when the request came to remove the existing residence from the historic inventory, the applicant wasn't required to, but shared a conceptual site plan of what they're proposing to do with the property. And the house was significantly more forward to preserve trees. The Historic Preservation Committee was, provided some sort of informal feedback because their decision had already been made to remove the house from the inventory, and provided the feedback that it would be acceptable to move the house back to utilize a similar setback to what's there now to help preserve the character of the street, and that if that meant removing a large tree, then that was deemed to be acceptable at that time.
And just to follow on, all of that being said, the commission is obviously free to make whatever decision it chooses and believes is appropriate.
Okay, that helps, because I actually remember the discussion about the Historic Preservation Committee, the request to keep the house pushed back to keeping cadence with the neighborhood. So that was, that was my understanding of the tree removal thought process. Thank you.
And I just would like to add that it was also my recollection from previous discussion that there was a general desire, even from neighborhood outreach, to preserve the, the front setback, to keep that meadow-like appearance. And so, you know, then we have an overly constrained problem. You can't keep that front setback and save the trees. And so deferring to the general wishes of the neighbors and the recommendation from Historic Preservation leads to removal of the large protected tree. Any other questions, discussion, comments from commissioners? from commissioners? Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes, I guess I'd start here to say that I fully support this project. I supported it back in December of last year. I thought it was a beautiful house, well-designed then. And I think this current iteration is a little bit better, to be honest with you. I do like the materials chosen. I have no issues with the fence height. I think four and a half feet is a very reasonable exception to make. And I will support the project tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Tavanna. Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to comment similarly to what Commissioner Tavanna said. I wasn't as supportive of the project for the first time we saw it, which is why we continued it. But I do feel like the applicant has done a very good job of changing the look and feel of the property and a little bit of the size of it to make it better fit into the neighborhood, having, you know, gone into the neighborhood multiple times. I like that they have reduced the driveway. And as Chair Janoff said, we spent quite a bit of time on the tree issue in our last meeting and came to the conclusion that, you know, after talking back and forth on it, that the applicant had demonstrated that they'd looked at every which way that they could to make sure that they saved as many trees as they could. But the only way they could save more trees would be to move the house forward. And that was not in favor of the neighbors. And to Commissioner Suzuki's comment, it is always standard practice, you know, finding our conditions of approval, that there are replacement trees required, and that's part of our tree ordinance as well. My only concern is the height of the fence. And it's mainly, it's not that I don't think it's justified. I certainly live in hillsides. We have tons of walkers. And people will come in your yard if they don't have a fence to do so. But my concern is really that we went through all the effort of updating the fence ordinance and put in that regulation that we're going to have a limit of a three-foot height in the front. And so my question for staff actually on this is that, you know, have we been making a lot of exceptions? Because it seems to me that a security exception is a very standard objection that almost anyone could make. And so that it basically takes the teeth out of that ordinance. So that's my question for staff.
So I can start, and then I'll probably have a question that Mr. Mullins probably can answer better than I. You know, a lot of exceptions is relative. There actually is a section of the code that says you could rebuild an existing non-conforming fence to the same height in its exact location without an exception. So, you know, I believe they're actually moving the fence back from where it is. If they just kept the fence, which I understand to be five feet currently in its current location, they wouldn't have to have an exception at all. So because they are relocating it and changing it, they are being required to ask for that exception. So, you know, ultimately, that would be something that would also play into staff's, you know, determination if a property came forward and wanted to do something similar, but maybe weren't doing a new house. You know, those would be the types of things we would take into consideration. And if Mr. Mullins could just confirm, you know, that the existing fence is actually five feet and is actually closer to the street than what they're currently proposing.
Yeah, I can confirm that the fence is approximately five feet, and it is closer to the street. This proposed fence is moved, set back, and increases its setback as it traverses to the north.
Okay, so that was very helpful to understand that because they're not rebuilding the fence exactly where it is, that that's causing the trigger for us to have to look at an exception. So thank you for that.
Any other comments from commissioners, or would anyone care to make a motion? Vice Chair Birch?
I should not have raised my hand right then, should I? Because now I can't find a sheet for approval, but whatever. I was going to make the comment that I really appreciate the fact that they took to heart many of the comments that we made last time and that they also heard from some of their neighbors. I think it's well-designed. I think the reduction in the width of the driveway creates a much more, you know, makes a better use of that large grassy front area in front of the house that the Historic Preservation Committee was asking to be kept. I will venture a motion of eight different items, if everybody will be patient with me, unless anybody else has other comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the application at 60. Like I said, I can't find my front page. There we go, 62 Ellenwood, requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence, removal of a large protected tree, and site improvements which require a grading permit on property zoned R112, APN 510-20-068. And I can make the findings that the project is categorically exempt Sweet Sequa, Section 15303, shown in Exhibit 2. I can make the findings for demolition of the existing structure, also in Existing 2, Exhibit 2, sorry. I can make the findings for the removal of the protected tree, as shown in Exhibit 2. I can make the findings that the project complies with the objective standards of Chapter 29 of the Town Code, shown in Exhibit 2. I can make the findings that due to security concerns, a fence height exception is allowed and is appropriate per Exhibit 2. And I would like to add just maybe the note there, so if we ever come back to this to wonder, that rather than maintain the existing location of a five-foot-high fence, the fence had actually been relocated to be pushed back a bit, and thus was actually reducing the height of the existing fence. I can make the findings required by the residential design guidelines that the project complies, as shown in Exhibit 2. I can make the considerations as required by Section 292150 for granting the architectural and site application, also in Exhibit 2, and approve the architecture and site application S-20-008 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 15 and the revised development plans shown in our package today under Exhibit 19. I did have a question on that one. That just referenced the plans. Are we not, there were two sheets in front of that, one that showed the color palette and the other that showed a light fixture, that were not part of Exhibit 19. They were right before that. I think they were 17 and 18, I believe. I would assume that those should probably be a part of that approved packet, since it's what references the color palette for the house.
Thank you for that. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hanson?
I second the motion.
All right. Any discussion or comments regarding the motion on the table? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think under the circumstances of this particular application and the comments that have been made by commissioners relating to the Historic Preservation Committee, that the application meets both of the requirements of Section 2910-0992-sub-E that were of concern to me earlier.
Thank you for that. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, I will call, by roll call, call for the vote. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Suzuki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Birch?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes 7-0 with no abstentions. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights regarding this item?
There are appeal rights. Thank you, Chair. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission could appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available online. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is other business. In addition to time spent on the planning commission, commissioners are assigned to three other town committees to help further the important work of Los Gatos. So the committee assignments that I have made for the year 2021 are these. Commissioner Hanson, Community Design and Advisory Committee, as well as General Plan Committee. Commissioner Tavanna, also the Community Design and Advisory Committee. Commissioner Barnett, also Community Design and Advisory Committee. Commissioner Thomas, General Plan Committee. Commissioner Suzuki, Historic Preservation Committee. And Vice Chair Birch, Historic Preservation Committee. And I will also be serving on the General Plan Committee. And I just want to thank you all in advance for your services. It's important work, and I know you do a great job. This, yes, Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make a quick correction, that it's the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee.
Thank you. On all three assignments, yes, thank you. Okay, now we move to the report from the Director of Community Development, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Chair. Couple things since the Planning Commission last met. Obviously, tonight we're welcoming our two new planning commissioners. That was accomplished on the 19th of January. The town council also held a strategic priorities session on the 26th. So there will be some additional information coming to all the commissions regarding the outcome of those discussions. So we'll be forwarding that to you shortly. On 2/23, we will be having a joint planning commission and town council study session, which will have a panel dealing with economic development topics, including placemaking and parklets, which Ms. Zarnowitz will also help facilitate and participate in. I'm still look forward to that. And with that, that concludes my report at this time. I assume that either yourself or Commissioner Hanson will discuss what's upcoming on the General Plan Advisory Committee, which is on Thursday.
Yes, thank you. And so we'll turn to the committee reports. And first, the Conceptual Development Advisory Commission. Commissioner Barnett, would you like to report?
Yes, there's been no meeting of the Conceptual Development, Design Advisory Committee since my last report.
Thank you. And Historic Preservation? No meeting, yeah. So that leaves us with the General Plan Advisory Committee. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, the General Plan Committee and then General Plan Advisory Committee have been very, very busy. And since our last Planning Commission meeting, we've met twice. And our current focus is updating the general plan towards the 2040 plan. And we had dug into the land use element. And I'm happy to say that at our last meeting, we completed our review of the first draft of the land use element. However, the land use element is sort of a two-part element. There's also the community design element, and they go hand-in-hand, and we haven't covered that yet. So that will be the topic for our next meeting, which is coming up a week from tomorrow. And then we will be moving on to the second draft of the racial and social environmental justice element, which is the new element. And so we are making our way through and have gotten through a lot of the difficult sections. And I want to thank Commissioner Birch for her service for the last two years that we've been meeting on the General Plan Committee. And I congratulate her on her new position. And we welcome Commissioner Thomas to the General Plan Committee. And we still have lots to do.
Of course. Thank you for that report.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair Janoff, sir? And for people that are interested in the topics that are coming up, and even if you're not on the general plan, right, you're welcoming all written comments and people to come and speak. So I feel like we should all still be reminding people that this process is still going on. And, you know, try to get people to pay attention, take a look at the upcoming elements, and send your comments in.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair. Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to echo Commissioner Birch's comments that, and actually, since our last community workshop and since we had meetings last summer, the public participation in our meetings has really dropped off a lot. And we really, really do benefit a lot from comments from the public, either written or coming to the meetings and making oral comments, because we are taking on some very heady topics in the general plan update. And I think it's important to have as much community participation as possible. So we definitely encourage people to contribute and participate in the process.
Thank you for that. Director Paulson?
Yeah, I would 100% agree. The more participation, the better. So it's a little different now. You're not all probably as out and about in a social setting as you might have otherwise been. But, you know, as planning commissioners, you're really ambassadors for the town. And so any outreach you can do on an individual level with folks in town to get them to participate would be very welcome. You know, obviously, this is going to come forward after the GPAC has completed their work to the Planning Commission, who will make a recommendation to the town council. Unfortunately, going through this process and other processes from a long-range planning perspective, what generally happens is we go through a two, probably and a half-plus-year process to get to the point where we're ready for planning commission and council. And then that's when folks wonder, you know, how this all of a sudden was developed out of thin air with no public outreach. We're still putting stuff in the paper. We are blasting stuff out on all of our social media. They're trying to use different mechanisms. But any thing that you guys can do or your friends can do, you know, get involved, because it's important. This is the long-range document constitution for land use, you know, up until 2040. And there's some changes that are coming down from the state that we're having to implement that are going to lead to change. And so changes, from my perspective, changes in that, but it will be probably something that people want to have more information on as we move forward in the process.
Yeah, thank you for that. It is so important. And speaking as a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, we really do take that input quite seriously. We're a relatively small group compared to the residents of town. We rely on persons with more expertise, more experience, more knowledge in the areas that the plan covers. And so we really do appreciate that input. It's heavily relied upon. So thank you for those comments.
And Chair, it looks like Commissioner Thomas has her hand up.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas. You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I'm not used to it. Normally, I'm the one that's the one that's not on mute the whole time. I just wanted to confirm that we should send people to the Los Gatos 2040 website to figure out how to participate. And I did not see the next meeting on the, like, on the website yet. So is that, will that be updated soon? Is that where people can find the Zoom link? And is there another calendar that I'm not seeing to promote to people? Because I think that, I do know people that would be, that I can encourage to participate.
Yeah, so the Los Gatos 2040 website is a great website. There's an email that they can send comments irrespective of whether we're having meetings or not. And then additionally, the agendas for General Plan Updated Advisory Committee with the Zoom links and those things generally aren't published until the Friday before the meeting. So that's really when it gets to that broader audience. I will speak with our staff. They may not be on the main calendar page, and so we can work to see if we can get those on different calendars, because, you know, we want to make sure that people do know that. Just if you're talking to folks, you know, generally, the General Plan Updated Advisory Committee meets on the, I think it's the first and third Thursdays, 7:00 p.m. And so that's the typical calendar for that. So that's another opportunity to let them know.
Joel, I'm on the, I just got on the site. The date's on there, the next one. It probably just got updated, because it's next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, did you have a comment?
I was just going to suggest that even if we don't have the agenda published, since we already know from the town's perspective that we have these meetings scheduled on the first and third Thursdays, and at least through, I think through May or June of this year, could we put those dates on the 2040 website, even though we don't necessarily have the agenda nailed down? That way, people could plan for that in their calendars?
So we'll look for options. The problem is, sometimes those meetings get canceled. Usually, we have the next two to three meetings on the front page of that 2040 website. But we'll take a look at that to make sure that there's some more advanced notice on that front.
Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you. Anything else, any other matters? Christian Thomas, is your hand still raised? Christian Thomas, is your hand still raised?
Yes, thank you. I think, I do see them on there, so thank you. I see where that is. I think that, yes, I understand that they, that sometimes these meetings don't always happen twice a month, so asking people to put them on their calendar or having it available, maybe just that, check, you know, just a note of check back and make sure that, but in general, what ti, what days and times they are, if people don't recognize that they're the first and third Monday, is maybe just what could be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, any other comments? I don't see any hands raised, and so with that, I'd like to thank you all for participating in this meeting and for your patience, as I chaired the first meeting of my tenure, and I'm now adjourning the meeting.
You did a great job. Yay.
Have a great meeting.
Everyone.
Good night.